Yeah, it's good drinking.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Didn't organize.
No.
I was just one person. From Madison Lodge?
Mm-hmm.
You can kill me if I'm being...
Yeah.
I guess.
Greg Ripper, brother in Lake Sidney. He has four houses.
Yeah, well, you know, Curry's. We have two lakes. I say more lakes. But we have Lake Sidney. So I got... I said something about him. And he goes, "Oh, I still got a house down there." I got these tires here. It's kind of...
He's done this stuff.
Got it. Had to change. That's the honest thing.
Yeah, yes. We've been doing that.
Real first grade, don't you think?
I can put my page in.
Yeah.
You getting technology, Greg?
Sounds good every time.
Yeah. You know, up here looking at it.
Yeah. I'm wrong, but that's an answer that I can... I think I'm right. I need to play my lap ball. Cause it's like a lap whatever you're out here.
I like my lap. Yeah. Anybody can say that.
I don't know if I'm...
I'm afraid I might strain and start watching television. Still... ESTN update. Evening, Tony.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Doing pretty good.
Enjoying the non-snow?
Yes. We've got just the right amount here.
I'm having a feeling that, but man, this is muddy out.
Yeah, spit pretty good up in there. Getting slick.
We'll call tonight's meeting the Lloyd City Council to order. Mandy, will you take a roll call, please?
Bob Renshaw?
Yes.
Kent Miller?
Here.
Rick Brown?
Here.
Tony Gimler?
Yes.
Matt Hotty?
Here.
Louis Latrell?
Present.
Robert Peterson?
Red.
Thank you. Could stand with me for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all that you bring to us in our wonderful community and the blessings that we have and for our youth and for all of the citizens of our fair city of Lloyd and our, and the surrounding communities that help make up what we are here. Thank you for the success that we continue to have in all of our, both of our schools and the athletics and the academics. We are truly blessed and continue to put your hand on our, our young folks as they travel to these events and represent our community. Continue to be with our law enforcement and protect them and our servicemen as they do the hard job of protecting us and our freedoms. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make note tonight in the, in the workstation on the discussion items, the people from the league will not be here tonight due to weather. The way I was looking yesterday, we was forecasting a storm as we all know, so they are going to try to make it to our next meeting and I don't think that'll affect our schedule and what we're trying to do with hiring the new administrators. Just want to make everybody aware of that procedure.
Bob, do you have anything?
No, I just kind of hope the sun starts shining a little warmer.
Yeah.
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to say that had a good turnout at the Raisin turn, Floyd Bridge tournament, we did have a Boyd's place second at it.
Kind of a large crowd here this year, too.
Yep, yep.
And well, since us wrestlers are...
Probably six yards.
Going back and forth here, we got one Thursday night in a, a league tournament. First time ever, so that's kind of a neat thing to have here. Tony.
Bob.
I've got a couple of concerns here and I've had some calls about some code violations. 121 South Pine, they used to park two semis in that yard and now we've got that gone, but now they're parking two cars in the yard. And we've had trouble with this guy up at Sixth and Hershey and he's back at it. He's got three cars there. So a few weeks ago, I contacted Glenn and asked him if he would see that Chris could cite these people and get them fined so that something gets in the paper and made it for a stop. Well, I, I don't know what's happened, but they're still doing it, Chris. And then we got this guy down here at 406 East Main, I've gotten calls on that. He's got two trucks and a trailer sitting on the street, motorcycle on the sidewalk, two cars and a trailer in his driveway, three cars parked in the side yard, two trucks and a short semi trailer in his backyard, and this trailer is sitting there and I hope it's anything. But there's another pickup on the other side of the street that's got a trailer hooked to it with a motorcycle, so that's 10 or 11 vehicles. I, I think we can definitely do something about that.
Okay. Chris, can you follow up on those or have you already followed up or were you aware of them?
Well, yeah, I'm aware of them. Um, gotta be there at the time to see it, get the pictures. Was it on Main Street? We've, I've been four steps before and I go back every now and then just to verify, but they can have, as long as those, the vehicles are operable and registered, have up the, well, at least 10 anyway.
Kind of like we used to have out on West Lane.
Yes, yeah.
Well, then that needs to be changed. That is the biggest mess I have ever seen. I just, I always go back to, how would you like that next door to you? We've got to do something about that because I don't know if they all run or not.
Yeah. Katie, what's the next step? Is there any way to eliminate that?
Uh, ordinance.
Another...
Guys can limit the amount of vehicles that can sit on a property. Um, we've, we've addressed the trailer issue and that, um, we don't, we don't have an ordinance for, for that. Um, there's really not a lot Chris can do unless they're jumped. If they all run and they are all tagged and they're not in the front yard, we've addressed the front yard issue.
Right.
Well, one of them is in the front yard and two of them are in the side yard. They're parked in the grass.
Is he on corner law? Is he, is that, that's not a corner?
No, it's not a corner law.
Yeah, he can be on the side, this can't be in the front. So the one in the front, Chris could handle, I mean, if he could catch that.
But I, I find it hard to believe we allow 11 vehicles on somebody's property. That's just ludicrous.
How many vehicles can an individual, individual own before they have to have dealer tagged?
I believe it's 10, but I think that there's different rules for antiques, I believe. I don't know if there's any antiques in there, but I think it's 10.
You know if he's all running or titled or tagged?
I know presently, like I said, I, I serve notice on them back once a year and then, and then try to follow up later, but, uh, you know, if, if the registrations expire or something like that, then, or they move something else new in there, I don't just beat them up every day or every week or every month for that matter, but I try to get them at least once a year.
Well, these two that have been flagrant, can't you go over there and write them a citation right now and...
No, sir. Which, which ones you call flagrant, sir?
This 121 South Pine and they got Sixth and Hershey.
Okay. Like I said, I have to, I have to, I have to see that in the front yard and get a picture of it at the time.
Well, drive by it, they're there all the time.
Thank you, I will. I, I haven't yet seen that vehicle in the front yard since I served notice to.
I went by there yesterday and there was two of them there.
Okay.
And this old boy up north, he's, he's got one parked this way with half of it on the driveway and half of it in the lot, and then the other one faces north and south and that's the front end of it's out in the yard, then he's got one in the driveway. And I think we've put up with him long enough, you know? I don't see warning or anything else. I'll guarantee you, if the police find somebody in a no parking zone, they're not going to give him 30 days to move it. They're going to get a ticket right then and I don't know what we've got to do, but we need to crack down on this stuff because it's just, it's some, such an eyesore coming right into town and, and both of them are on the entrances to town.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever it takes, I, I hope the plan even...
Katie, I talked about it, see what we can, what we can do, what we can come up with and...
Yeah.
Thank you for cuffballing up with that.
Yeah.
That's all.
Not just Tony.
Yeah, Matt?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Lynn Miller for her working with both political parties and getting us ready for the March 5th Kansas caucuses because both parties are going to be, have their caucuses here in the Crystal Building. And she's been very accommodating, I know, for my party and I'm sure she's been that way with the public as well, so.
Is that the first one here?
Uh, yeah, this is the first time the Lloyd's going to be hosting the Democratic caucuses.
How large of an area?
13 counties.
13, oh, that can draw a lot of people. Thank you. Lloyd?
No, sir.
Katie, do you have anything?
Um, just a couple, I just, you had some stuff in your packets. Um, I will try to pass along anything I get from the league on legislation. They had some good information on the proposed property tax lift. Um, right now that's not set for hearing through saying, but if that happens, I will for sure pass that along so you can contact our legislators. Um, in addition, I think that Carl invitation is in there. Um, that's kind of a, a big deal that the Carl program is coming here, so if any of you guys are interested in going, um, that's in there. I think that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. I think the city staff reports were in your, your packet, that's kind of a rundown of what they cover at with, at their staff meetings and present and kind of try to keep you up to breath if you're needing some more information, let me know, and we'll pass that on. On a, on another note, we have a possible candidate for an interim manager. John Devine contacted me last night, was trying to get, was going to give me the information today and he hadn't got the information yet to send to us, but it's a gentleman, he is, I think recently retired and he's had 40 years' experience in city management and city administration, so I think it might be a real good candidate. Lives in the Wichita area, so he's not that far, wouldn't be that far away from this stuff. Once we get some more of that information, we'll get it to council so they kind of know what we're up to.
Tom, how, how are we, if we get an interim, that would he be staying here during the week and be in the office or how?
You know, that's what I intend, you know, we got to see what his intentions are, how many days a week that he would want to, and, 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 and work around that. And then he would probably commute on the weekends, I guess, and what I'd like to see if we have one is having him stay here all week long and then, then commute home maybe Friday afternoon or something like that. And that way they could be here for staff and for the public, for somebody that, another face here in the office to help out and help Mandy with her planning and keep some of these projects that we have moving forward and so that's...
I appreciate Mandy and her staff keeping the boat afloat.
Oh, they do a great job.
I'm sure they've got, got some heavy duties to take care of.
Yeah, they do, and you know, they, I think they're all picking up the slack and, and trying to do the best they can for us as a community, so we just kind of follow their lead sometimes and move on from there.
You didn't mean the city administrator, not manager, right?
Well, I see, well, yeah, I see administrator, but this gentleman has, I think, been the city, he's been in the management of cities, I'm not for sure exactly what title he is. I was talking to John and today I was following up to see where the information was and he was on a mountaintop in Hawaii, so he didn't have a lot of access right at the moment. So as soon as we, you know, we've been working, there's just the people to the eastern part of the state, some of them didn't want to trap to travel this far and, uh, there's a lot, I think, a lot of openings in Kansas, so it gets harder to find some people at this time. And this gentleman is connected with Dennis Kissinger, who I think he has a position with the league or, or someone now, but he's former administrator for the city of Salinas, so you know, he's been in the business, has a lot of contacts and, and so we'll see what we have and what he's, what the options are and things like that. But I just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at with that and, and as we keep moving forward on things, so. Uh, any, any questions, anybody for staff or questions? Okay, moving, uh, next item is Bob Severance, would like to read his presentation on the Isle of Lights 2015 report. Bob, this is kind of interesting, I was telling these guys that, well, there's nobody from my hometown on here and then I looked and there was one from Madison Lodge, so I guess I was wrong.
Thank you. Uh, this is the end, you have a copy in front of you for your reference right there. Uh, this is our 17th year of doing this. By and large, it was a very good year. We had some problems, went at the beginning of the season with rain. Now, uh, we can have a snow and get by pretty good shape, but when the electrical cords are laying in the water, uh, she's not going to fly. And so we run into problems of people who have come a long ways and are in line waiting to get in the park and it breaks out raining at 8 o'clock and they have to say, "Sorry, we're shutting her down right now." Uh, I got an earful from a couple of them there, they have to say they had traveled a long ways for this and I said, "Well, I'm not in charge of the weather here, but we just can't keep that open right here." We've had several new displays that we had, as you noticed, the Michael Harbaugh Appreciation Display, the Jordan family put in a large beef cow, the Remus family had a perch and draft horse of heart choices, put in a new display, then a large rose from Brad and Vlad Pearson. Our nightly gate hosts were most accommodating, we got along quite well with them. We've improved our heating system, we have a ground stove right now that people are able to get up next to instead of those tall things that the wind kept blowing the, the flames out, so we have been, got better on that. We continue to replace the old rope light with the more efficient LED light and we've had many complimentary remarks about that, that it just brightens up the park and according to Steve Crer, it takes just about a fourth the electricity. So we keep adding displays, but the electricity, uh, consumption goes down. Number six is most important, that we're grateful for the city employees and their equipment to help put up and take down our things. At present time, we, we, we continue to grow, we have more than 240 displays. Uh, as you know, some of them are really big. We started out in 1999 with 54 and so, uh, it has grown in, over the years. Got to give special recognition to the Isle of Lights board members that continue to stay in the trenches to make that thing fly. They include Ray Conway, Ruth Bell, Michelle Hydrick, Charles Axel, Barbara Axel, Arnie Ansley, Terry Nyberg, Bob Gibbons, Lady Cooper, and one old geezer's been there for air for. And at the end of the presentation today, we will ask for an extension of our lease for next year. You turn to the second page to get some information there on the tenants. This year, there were a total of 166 Kansas towns represented or a total of 9,983 or Kansas towns. Now, Lloyd, city of Lloyd in, uh, this year had 4,110. Uh, last year they had just 4,018 and the year before 3,923, so that's coming up just a bit. Our number of, uh, non-Kansas states is 33 with 732 people from out of state and there were eight countries represented with 23 there. Then it gives you your top non-Lloyd towns with Concordia at the top there with 771 and sliding down the line with 274. The top Nebraska, top non-Kansas states was, was Nebraska, we had 246 from there, Colorado 93, Texas 84, Oklahoma 38, and California and Georgia had 19 of these. The next page gives the breakdown of details and I won't go through them. I just want to make a couple of notations there. We have the host write down the state and the town that they put in and some of it, bless their hearts, some of the handwriting isn't as swift as we would like it. And so we have to, so you'll notice on there over on the third column, we have a Mylan that, well, I've never heard of that as a Kansas town, and also a Nashville, I've never heard of that one before either. There is one?
Yep, it's down by Sawyer, Southeast of Sawyer.
Well, very good, I spaned correctly. I'm totally delighted you spanned correctly on that one, too. Okay, the next page gives you the states and there were 732 from out of state. Uh, countries was Australia, Thailand, Iceland, China, Germany, Spain, South America, and India, and I am not so naive to think that that guy from India came all the way just to Lloyd, Kansas, just to see the Isle of Lights, but we're glad that he kept seeing it anyway. Uh, of other note, and this will be the income at the date was, was about par, we took in about $12,497 and 97 cents, which is an average of a dollar 16 per person who comes through. Now, in our recap of our money, we, we see lots of tens and twenties in there, dollar bills, and we see lots of pennies where they cleaned out their ice tray and they went there and that's okay. We say it's free and that's the way it should be. And so we would request a present lease to be extended for next year, starting October the 19th to January the 21st of 2017. We have a question.
Bob, I've got a question. On that income, is that money used to upgrade the, um, the lights, new cords, that type of thing?
That, that's what we go for and we spend a, some of those, you know, some of those arches have, have been there for air. And when you start replacing those, you go through a long arduous period and LED is not cheap. And, uh, we, we will have a display show the last Thursday in March where people who want to buy a display for the Isle of Lights or whatever on, we have a designer from Oklahoma comes up. And so anybody that is interested in that one, we'll advise you at that time. Further questions? Uh, we appreciate this very much, so it's, uh, I'd like to think that, you know, in the process of, did I read for Lloyd? Yes, was it the top 10 of the places to live in Kansas? And I'd like to think that maybe the Isle of Lights has a little something to contribute to that.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you very much.
And all your people.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
I'd make a motion that we extend the lease for the park and the Isle of Lights Committee for next year. Have a second. Maybe we'll draw that up. Uh, any further discussion on that, extending the lease?
Super job, I'm impressed.
Those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
We'll get it drawn up and get it...
There you go, you some anxiety there towards the end, just before we pull it up there in November of whose dumb idea was this anyway?
We know, Bob, we know whose idea.
Thank you very much.
Very adorable, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance 2176, the code adoption of the city code. Any questions? I think we'll direct those towards Katie if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, have you approved the code adoption ordinance 2176?
Motion been made by...
Have a second.
Councilman Hotty, that we accept ordinance 2176 code adoption, it was seconded by Councilman Brown. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a question. Now, when they do the annual updates, how will those be distributed?
They will send, um, new sheets and you'll...
Just remove the old one.
Yeah, every year.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
And updated online within 48 hours of publication, so always up to date online, which is nice.
Any further discussion? Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance 2176, the code adoption of the city code. Any questions? I think we'll direct those towards Katie if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, have you approved the code adoption ordinance 2176?
Motion been made by...
Have a second.
Councilman Hotty, that we accept ordinance 2176 code adoption, it was seconded by Councilman Brown. Is there any further discussion? Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gimler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Hotty?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Hotty?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Hotty?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the ordinance 2176, the code adoption of the city code. Any questions? I think we'll direct those towards Katie if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, have you approved the code adoption ordinance 2176?
Motion been made by...
Have a second.
Councilman Hotty, that we accept ordinance 2176 code adoption, it was seconded by Councilman Brown. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a question. Now, when they do the annual updates, how will those be distributed?
They will send, um, new sheets and you'll...
Just remove the old one.
Yeah, every year.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
And update it online within 48 hours of publication, so always up to date online, which is nice.
Any further discussion? Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gimler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Hotty?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Just one additional comment, um, read through that thing several times, but if you see any little typos, if you're looking, just let me know, because like I said, it's up to date online, so we can, all I have to do is send an email and he'll make any changes. I know Bob caught a couple for me, so it's not a big deal to change now, it's nice.
Lot faster process than what it's been fast.
Yes. And our last code was adopted in 1986, so 30 years later.
We're there. Next item on the agenda this evening is Resolution 2016-5, the financing of police radios, a three-year lease purchase agreement at 2.19% with Solomon Valley Bank.
I thought we voted on this some other time.
We voted to approve it, now I think we have to have, approve it in a resolution form.
Yep, this is the actual lease.
Isn't that correct?
You approved to purchase them, this is approving the lease agreement.
That's a move. It's been moved by Councilman Richard that we accept Resolution 2016-5, have a second. Second by... Any further discussion? No further discussion, Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gimler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Hotty?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda this evening is the 2016-6, the fee schedule. And listed on the changes.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor, on the, I'm assuming that by annual, like on the liquor license, you're doing it like the state does, now that...
I had a question, Mr. Mayor, on the, I'm assuming the biannual, like on the liquor license, you're doing it like the state does, now that's a two-year fee?
Yeah, our, our old schedule had an annual fee, the statute actually requires a biannual.
Well, the state went to that, so, yeah.
Yeah, so we're just updating, yeah. Fees will be the same. We're not increasing the fee, but...
Any other questions on the fee schedule? Entertained a motion to accept, are approved. Been moved by Councilman Miller. That we approve Resolution 2016 dash six, the fee schedule, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Gengler. Mandy, would you take a, uh, roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Hotty?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.